Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for July 12, 2016. We'll begin with a special order calendar to continue hearing items. Item number one, 698-59-BZ, 2773 Nostrana Avenue, Brooklyn.
Hello. Good morning, Eric Palatnik.
I don't think we had any further issues on this, right? So are there any speakers on this? So then I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair of promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Achanda?
Aye.
And for a motion to grant.
Chair of promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Achanda?
Aye. Thank you.
Item number two, 1255-80-BZ, 3533, 31st Street, Queens. Do we have an adjournment request on this?
Yeah, the request was for adjournment to October 14. Seems far enough away. It was a submission on September 21.
Item number three, 374-71-BZ, 205-11-Northern Boulevard, Queens. So adjournment request on this?
Aye, Eric Palatnik on behalf of Rothkrug, Rothkrug Inspect. They've asked for three weeks to submit.
Right, three weeks to submit, okay.
Or three, I think, actually, excuse me, three weeks for a hearing, you're correct.
Say again?
Three weeks for a hearing, I apologize. They could submit within that.
Well, what about submit?
They could submit in two weeks if it would be acceptable to the board, or if that's not enough time, they could submit in three.
Okay, so if you wanted to submit in two weeks, what's our hearing look like on? The 23rd looks okay. Okay, so you could come on the 23rd with a submission on August 3rd?
That's great, thank you.
Item number four, 1122-81-BZ, 105-14 Astoria Boulevard, Queens.
Eric Palatnik again.
So that one you wanted a longer?
Yes, please, in September, we could, that'd be good.
That's a hearing in September or submission in September?
We could submit at the end of August if that pleases the board.
Okay, so how about September 13th? The end of August, okay, so like an August 31 submission, is that what you want?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so that's a September 20 hearing.
Thank you. On September 20?
Yes, September 20.
Thank you.
Item number five, 826-86-BZ through 828-86-BZ, Grand Central Parkway, Queens.
Hello, good morning again, Madam Chairman, members of the board, Eric Palatnik. With us here today, representatives of North Shore Towers. I know some of the women that were representing some of the shareholders are here in the back, I forget their specific names, as well as Bill Davies of Continental Communications, the Lessey of the rooftop. We brought revised plans with us, and Bill is here today. The revised plans includes notes showing the exact signage, showing its location, also indicates clearly the location of the FM antenna on the bulkhead of the rooftop of the bulkhead, and I'll pass up those revised plans now.
Just slipped out.
It's okay, Mr. Levy.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we just passed up the revised plans, and while those are coming up, I'd also, I'll just tell the board, we also submitted, I know there's some technical difficulties with the CD that we had submitted to the board, we also submitted a cover letter associated with that, and basically it was just an informational meeting to the residents, just explaining the fire safety measures. And Mr. Brett is here today, he's the author of that letter, and he can speak about that to educate the board.
So wait, the CD is what, it's a video of a meeting?
Yes.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, there was also, it's shown on the Cooperative's house channel. Captain and Lieutenant of the New York City Fire Department Training Division were in attendance, and it gave everyone a chance to understand the fire safety measures. Phil, do you want to walk?
Well, we weren't able to see the video.
I wasn't. I wasn't either.
None of us were able to see the video.
Right, I know there's a technical difficulty. I brought extra copies of the CD with me here today, so if you get bored, if you want to watch, everybody still has a CD player, and that's part of the problem.
But if it's the same format as before, we didn't move the saw away to open it.
We'll try again with Mr. Costanza.
You tried to put the CD in and put it, watch it.
I couldn't watch it even.
Couldn't even watch it.
With the CD.
There was some kind of, all right, we'll be in touch with Mr. Costanza.
Because the videos that you sent before were perfectly, you know, the ones that showed the, what, there was a video.
Nonetheless, we also gave you a letter dated June 23rd from Errol Brett that summarizes the video itself, but we will work with Mr. Costanza to try and get a, one that you could read and the, one that you could watch.
So somewhere on this drawing, it shows the FM antenna, can you show us where that is?
William Davies, Continental Communications.
I know. BSA 3.
Did you go to BSA 3, I believe it is?
Mm-hmm.
BSA 3?
Yeah.
Top west?
Oh, top, I see, the corner, the right. So just that one little dot is causing all this difficulty? Okay, and then you were, oh, that question about the signs, unless you, the signs that are on the entrances to the roof.
Okay.
I don't know if you changed the code, but it indicated that there was both a yellow sign and a red sign. How's that, how's that work?
The elevated bulkhead, which is a hatch, that is a red sign, and the three wings, the A, B, and C wing, are yellow signs.
Oh.
Because the red sign doesn't have the, what, the, yellow signs have the voltage decrease, the wattage decrease.
Correct.
The doors.
And the hatch is the full power, you're closer to the antenna, nobody has access to it.
And the hatch does, is not connected to the reduced power system.
It's locked, it's a hatch, it's not open to general public.
Okay.
We kind of went over this a few times, you remember.
But all the roof access doors have the dual signage?
The three doors, yeah, the four doors, yes.
No, but how do you tell from these drawings which sign is like on the, on the A wing door?
Okay, can I walk over to you?
Yeah.
Okay. So you have an A wing door here, right?
Yeah.
So here's the detail, 135 on BSA 4.
Right.
So if you go to BSA 4.
135.
135, which is the last page. So 1, 3, 5.
5, oh, I see, it's not 134, okay.
So now if you go back, you go back to this, that's, this, that's this detail, 1, BSA 3?
3, and then that's the red sign.
Okay.
No, that's the yellow sign.
Oh, no, no, BSA 3 would be it.
Oh, sorry, BSA 3.
Oh, is this right? Sorry.
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
BSA 3.
BSA 3, and that tells you right there, at that hatch location, is that?
1, 2.
BSA 4?
Right, and 1 and 2, 4. 1 and 2, info and woo. Wait, 1 and 2.
We're on them, I'll go.
Yeah. Sorry.
2, 1 and 4.
Okay.
So it's this sign and 4.
And the red.
And that's why there's a red and a yellow.
Got it, okay. Red and yellow, not simultaneous. Okay, good. And then, what?
I'm still a little confused with the 1 BSA 3 drawing, so is there really one FM antenna?
Yes, ma'am.
This is the only one?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's only in building 1?
Yes, ma'am.
None in 2 and 3?
Thank you. And then, oh, a drawing that shows where the fire department shut off is, and?
On that, we're making a request, the note that's on, what drawing was it, on P, yes, the sign, and well, just for the alarm as well. What we're asking is if we could add a note to the plan sheet that would indicate where the location is on one other floor, rather than providing a specific approved plan sheet of that floor for the board. And the reason why, obviously, is there's a lot of open applications on this property, there's a lot of filings at the Department of Buildings. We're very concerned about putting a floor that's not related to the rooftop in its entirety, other than this one device that's here to address the top, and the plan examiner at Department of Buildings will then see that plan. If anybody makes any changes to that plan, we could see ourselves getting objections to come back to the board.
Oh, but that's a full, how about a key plan? That just, a little key plan, small, that just points to it and says room number, whatever.
Would it be okay for the board if we give it for diagrammatic purposes, so we don't go out and measure the floor and have a full, we're just trying to point to that floor, we don't have a floor plan drawn up of that floor. That's the first thing.
So a partial, a partial plan showing the room with the room number?
Would be sufficient.
And showing the cutoff?
That's very reasonable, we could do that.
And in, and in a key, so you know where the room is.
Yeah, so, yeah, of course, no, we'll key it to the top, to the, to the plan set. Yeah, that'd be great.
No, what I mean to say is, it's a T-shaped building, that room is located somewhere on floor X of the T-shaped building.
In what portion of the T, so you have some?
Yeah, so there's a little diagram.
So we'll do a little key diagram that shows the location, like a photo, almost like a photo location point, except in this case in the, we understand.
Right, and then there's a dot, and then there's a little exploded drawing that shows the plan of that room and where that information, that stuff is located. It's okay?
Yep.
Okay. And then, also, just something that clarifies how the wiring system works for the shut-off, for the door control shut-off, where, where's that?
That should be in note 4, description in note 4, last page.
That's the note that I just mixed up.
Yeah, so that's a general description as opposed to saying what you're actually doing, right? So let's see.
Those are exactly what it does.
Okay, when a person opens anything, okay, no, no, it's, everybody okay with that description? Is that enough?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Location of the warning light source. And it indicates there's a warning light, right, on that note?
Red and green.
Use power lines, which is the light panel. All right, so if you could just make that, those little additional things?
And I, what did, what was the video of?
A meeting, a meeting that Mr. Brett organized with residents of the building with the fire department, a fire safety meeting.
Oh, a fire safety meeting.
Yeah, just to go through, just to board to discuss, we've been discussing fire safety, so we're just trying to show the board the outreach the building takes by having fire safety representatives of the fire department there, and then it gets broadcast on the closed-circuit TV to advertise to all the residents.
Okay, so, and then in terms of the annual testing, that those reports were supposed to go to the management and the tenant association, was there a tenant association form, or whatever, property owners association?
Well, it's, you have the shareholders association, which are, which are here today.
Okay, so they created something.
And then you've got the building, the building management as well, you've got the board of the buildings, you have three different entities, you have building management, you have the building board, and then you've got the shareholders.
That, that's what we were talking about last time, we were talking about the, sort of another group that was independent, okay.
Can I address that?
Yes, please.
Good morning, my name is Errol Brett. What we did, we took to heart what the, what you folks wanted, and we've made a copy of the report online, because we have our own website for all residents, so the report is for everybody now, nobody is getting, no group is getting it, so as soon as we get a report, it automatically goes online, which it has already been, so we don't think you should have to just give it to one particular group of just 40 or 50 people as opposed to another group, when everybody has access to the same information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, yeah, I know, I think there'll be, there are speakers also?
Yes, I'm sure there are.
People from the building who want to speak? Yeah, come.
Hi, I'm Diane Stromfeld, and I am the president of the North Shore Towers Community Association, which is the name that we gave to our shareholders association. We have held two meetings, we're very much up and running, and one of our committees has to do with security, another one has to do with general life environment, and we are anxious to be able to receive the reports, so that we can have an engineer look at the reports, and then, I believe, as someone here suggested, if we find a problem, to bring it to you, because you don't bring the problem to us.
Correct.
And we just want to make sure that the rights of the tenants are protected, or the residents, I should say, and that we do get that report. Now, what Mr. Brett was referring to is a site, it's certainly a website that's available, it is difficult to get onto for people who are not computer savvy, and many of our residents do not own a computer or an iPad, and barely know how to use a cellphone, so to post anything on the internet is very difficult for many of the tenants to access. We, on the other hand, do hold meetings, we have committees, so we have word of mouth, and therefore we'd like to make sure that we do get all reports.
So, but my question, isn't there somebody on your committee who's computer savvy? I mean, the fact that they mounted onto the website means it's accessible to one person who has a computer and a printer, right?
Well, yeah, but printing it is quite an expensive thing, we do hold a meeting. See, the question that I have?
So you're saying you need to have a hard copy that is not going to be okay?
No, 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 let me just interrupt you for a second, if you don't mind, and then perhaps we can come to an agreement. We want the information in as timely a manner as possible. Your board recommended that a tenants association be formed, so that we could get a copy, and therefore we did exactly what you recommended, and we were formed and have had two meetings since the recommendation. I see no reason why we don't get it directly from the party who is supplying the report. We don't know if there's been any redaction in what's been posted, we don't know the quality of what's been posted, so we want the original, and then we can turn it over.
A copy, you want a copy of the original?
Well, the copy of the original, obviously, so that we can turn it over to an engineer. We just want to make sure that we have what everybody else has, that's it.
Okay, all right.
Do we need to give you the?
Yeah, you need to give us the name of your group?
Sure. It's the NST.
Actually, if you would submit just a letter with the contact information and the names?
Actually, I did.
You did?
I never got an acknowledgement.
And if it's in our record, then?
If someone could give me a direct email to whom I should send it, I'll do it tonight.
Okay, okay, you know what, actually, go over to Tony after this, and she'll give you the contact.
Okay, you have any other questions as far as the shareholders are concerned?
Anybody else?
Great, thank you very much, we do appreciate. Will we be able to get everything in the report that was distributed to you today?
You mean the drawings that were, that's all we got? That's available at the board office, yeah, I mean, if they, they maybe could give you, if they have an extra copy, then they should give it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I could take copies, got it?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Stay there, stay there. Are there any other speakers?
Introduce yourself.
Good morning, I'm Morton Gitter, I'm president of the North Shore Towers Board of Directors, I'm also an attorney, and I've devoted a huge amount of time to North Shore Towers. A couple of things that I would just like to say, in order to cooperate, every single month, we send a detailed letter to all of our shareholders, specifically stating what has transpired, including the results of every one of these meetings. We post it on our official website, which every resident in the building has access to, and I have a copy of a portion of the website. We've posted five reports to the board, including, I believe, what Ms. Stromfeld has. I think it's important for you to understand the relationship of this shareholders group. This is not an official organization that has any representation, other than perhaps 49 people who live in North Shore Towers, out of approximately 3,000. So I hope you don't form the impression that this is the representative group of the shareholders, because I'm proud to state that the majority of our shareholders are not members of this group, nor do they support it. As a matter of fact, there's a competing website, and every single day, there is board bashing and material about the board, 90% of which is hostile to the board, so it's not exactly that we are getting an even shake. We have lived with this situation now for probably five years. We went through two litigations, which cost the co-op approximately $150,000 to try to terminate the lease with Continental Communications. We lost both of those litigations, and we were compelled by a court order in the Supreme Court, Queens County, to sign a consent decree, that we are just required to cooperate with Continental and just provide them with the access, so that they can get the permits. We do not really have the laboring aura in this saga, which I will call it. We hope we're at the end of the road here, because to continuously cost our shareholders money, we've had a complete education plan from the fire department, as you probably have heard, approximately two months ago, we had over 300 people in our auditorium, and the fire department gave a complete presentation of its plans to evacuate the building. So we have cooperated fully, and we would appreciate if the commission would conclude this event and get on with it, so that we really don't have to spend significant dollars and deal with it any further.
So it's up to the applicant to conclude the event?
I'm sorry, sir, I can't hear you.
It's really up to the applicant and the applicant's team to conclude the event, the board doesn't sort of keep these open for its own enjoyment. With respect to the report, there's, it sounds like you're discussing something with absolutely no substantive difference. There's going to be a report that's going to be published online, as an accommodation to tenants who have difficulty using computers for whatever reason, the board is going to request that a courtesy copy be sent to that tenant's association. It's available to them anyway, so really what's happening is your?
I think I give you an answer to that, sir. As far as we know, they are not represented by counsel.
If they have access to the website, then they can print something.
Should they do, every single shareholder of North Shore Towers, including?
So there's no, so the difference is, you're extending a courtesy to some neighbors to print something for them, that's, that's the only difference here. It's available to them anyway, they're going to be a thorn in your side anyway, and so it's just a matter now of saving them the hardship of printing, and so in the interest of moving things forward, we're going to have the North Shore Towers Community Association receive a copy.
We have nothing to hide.
I know that, that's why it's not a problem to you.
And, but, all we're really trying to at least make our position known, that we believe it's been abundantly established that the premises are safe, though you may have heard things way, way back to the contrary, the fire department is happy, our shareholders are concerned, they say, what is going on, why is this thing dragging so long, and though we tried to explain in the letters and in our discussions, we really hope that it's time to bring this thing to a conclusion rapidly and not keep it going.
Okay, it's not, we're not keeping it going, we've been trying to bring the application into some sort of form that would protect the, the safety of the individuals who go to the roof, and to limit the amount of radio frequency that's emitted to the extent that we can, or the danger to people who might be exposed to it, and it took, it took this much time to get studies, to understand the studies, to come to some agreements, and so that's what we're doing, and now we're just fine-tuning some information on some documents, and we're going to close this, and, but unfortunately, we can't vote on it today, because we're waiting for documents.
A final thought, the group is not an official group representing anybody at North Shore Towers.
They've been, they've been an active group at these hearings, they're owed the courtesy, and so I'm sorry, we're done with this now, so thank you, sir.
Okay, I appreciate your time and effort, thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
She wants to speak, just, I just want to interject, just so the board is clear, Eric Palatnik, Continental Communications is sort of in the middle of this discussion that you're having right now, so the discussion you are engaged between the last two speakers and the current speaker that's about to speak, is not, as they say on the commercials, is not, are not the views of Continental Communications, but the board is obviously at the ear and powered to do whatever he feels right, and will, as Continental Communications, will bide with whatever decision you deem proper.
Right, thank you.
Good morning, again, pleasure to see you all again.
Say your name, please.
Just want to bring out one simple point, Barbara, I'm sorry, Barbara Leonardi, shareholder of North Shore Towers, just would like to bring out a point of Mr. Gitter's, the website he spoke of is at the discretion of the board, so the second you write those resolutions, the board, and he is president, can determine that he wants to shut it down and not print that report. I believe what you are trying to go for here is an alternative, Mr. Gitter was just elected, the margin was not that great, next election, he may not be president. The boards come and the boards go, and as you know, in a co-op and with these boards, that the president does have an ultimate power to make a lot of decisions, so by sending it to their website, you're just sending it to them. By sending it to the shareholders, and believe me, we have attorneys, we have engineers, we are not a haphazard organization forming, and the shareholders association has been around at North Shore Towers since, I believe, 2004, when Mr. Gitter first went on the board in 2005, so there always has been, always will be, in any type of situation like this, an organization that needs to be an advocacy group. So again, we could leave here, you could write those resolutions, and Mr. Gitter can decide to shut down that website, he cannot shut down next door, which is what his problem is. Thank you again for listening, and I appreciate again what you have done for the residents of North Shore Towers.
Thank you. I'm sorry, you've already spoken, we don't have repeat speakers.
Can I just?
No, 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 if you have more, if you want, if you have more to say, you can send it in a letter to the same location. I'm sorry, yeah.
Thank you.
One time, one time only.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Eric Palatnik.
Okay, so, we will want the?
The plan showing the location points of the equipment at the lower level, with sort of a diagram, like a photo location point, showing where and what, going to the T. We also, just to confirm for the board, we're acceptable with annual reporting to the board of, as well as to whatever the board needs necessary, and you'll indicate that in your resolution, and I just want to confirm with the board that you are still okay with the concept of a 10-year term on this application, which is our request.
Right, are we still here with that?
Thank you, we appreciate that.
But I just want to, okay, because I'm, I'm going to close this, but there are, there's going to be conditions, so the conditions of my, my motion will be that the maximum of 75 antenna, which is what's currently shown on the drawings, is, if that's the maximum, no more antenna to be installed on any of the, of the buildings than 75, and when you do the count, it has to include all broadcast equipment, receivers and transmitters, including dishes and antennae, so effectively the drawing of the roof, for example, for building 3, represents all the installations, because there's future antennas shown and existing ones.
Yes, we thank you for accommodating that, it gives a lot of ease when you go to Department of Buildings and move antennas, so thank you.
Right, and that, and then again, the testing of the radio frequency levels are conducted annually, and that the results, as we discussed, be provided to building management and the tenants associate, oh, whatever they are, the property owner association, and that the operational and maintenance plan that you provided to us, that has those photographs, will be included in the drawing set, so that's a, that's a clearer way for the board to know what the parameters are, okay?
Also that no additional FM antennas be placed on any of the buildings.
Yes, okay, right, because it's different than, right, and no additional FM antennas.
I think Mr. Davies is crystal clear on that.
I guess AM or FM, radio antennas.
No, no additional radio antenna. No, no additional radio antenna.
We understand.
Right?
That's 75?
No, that no additional AM or FM radio antennas shall be placed on any of the buildings. Correct? Is, is, you have a problem with that?
No, I guess I don't.
Okay.
It sounded like West Side Story.
I think we also want to make sure that no other antenna that has similar kind of frequency as FM would be allowed because we don't know what the future technologies going to be. Anything that has that high level of, is that, how do we do?
I don't think you can implement.
No.
How do we know that?
Well, there's a maximum of 75 antennas.
There's a maximum of 75, but if three of them were AM or FM radio antenna, then... I don't know. But their emission is going to show up in the report, right? So, if there's, if there's some change...
Yeah, I was going to say, that's what Bill is whispering in my ear.
If some change in the report in, in the frequency of how much is being emitted...
He still has to stay in compliance with the overall reading, so, and you're going to know about that, so.
Okay. Right. Okay.
Well, it's just a concern of workers, like, say, you put one on Building 2. It's a concern that workers wouldn't be warned and they would go on the building and it would exceed the occupational limits.
Okay. I understand that. So, if I add one on Building 2, let's say, okay? We'll do the same procedure that we're doing now with the alarms and the whole lighting system and everything. That will have to go in place before the radio goes on the air.
Well, I also, I also feel that the testing should be done immediately, not annually. Immediately.
Absolutely. If I add FM antenna, the testing will be done immediately.
Wait, wait, wait. Did we say adding any FM antennas?
No. He's talking about if you wanted to add to another building, if.
Right. So, he's got future proposed, you know? But they're not future FMs, they're just antennas.
No, FM.
We're talking FM right now. When I talk about FM, we're talking FM.
The question...
He's saying that he may want to add a radio antenna to another building.
Addition, not moving it.
No, not moving it, adding it.
The question came up, what happens in the future if on, in another building, that we, Building 2, they want to put an FM antenna on the, you know, on the bulkhead of that building. So, the question came up.
Well, yeah, maybe that's the best thing.
You have to be back here.
Come back here.
I think, I think because of this whole subject, that no additional AM or FM antenna, period, if you want, under this approval. If you want to do that, you have to come back here.
That's fair enough. We'll come back. If we need that, we'll come back for it. That's fair enough.
You have to do that anyway for an FM. You'd have to be back.
The whole process, like two states.
Yeah. Well, now you know the drill.
Make it go quicker.
Right. Exactly.
So, we understand. We're okay with all the conditions, of course, that you just listed. And we'll give you back a revised plan showing the location point, the lower level.
Okay. Good. So, understanding all of that and making the changes that we need changed, the things we need, a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Okay. So, how much? How much time do you need to?
I'll get on right away. I should be able to, three weeks, I probably can get done. I'll start working on it next week because of the certification. I had a scramble last night to Ed and Town. I worked long as a patient, so I'll wait until you're back and I'll work on it right away.
So, there's a hearing on August 23rd that's available?
That's fine.
But that means you have to submit via August 3rd. That's not three weeks.
So, August 3rd, enough time, Bill?
Otherwise, there's a hearing on September 13th that's available.
September 13th. So, make it safe. September 13th is fine.
Okay. So, then a submission by August 24th. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Item number 6, 7799 BZ, 25539, Jericho Turnpike, Queens.
Madam Chair, Commissioner's staff, Alfonso Doherty for the application. At the last hearing, there were several items that were brought up. One, if I want to go through them and answer them, was the, the sign was changed and an application was filed with the Department of Buildings and a permit issued for a non-advertising illuminated sign. That sign is presently there. I filed a copy of the permit and I filed a cop, a picture of the sign. That's there now.
But the sign was being used for advertising purposes.
Pardon me?
The sign is being used for advertising purposes. They're advertising other businesses, not just the car wash.
I checked to the owner. I don't know why, why that's coming up. I have no idea.
Oh, I saw it. I observed that.
Well, when I was there, I took a picture of the sign and that was, that was, was coming up.
Can you?
At that time.
Show us the picture?
Pardon me?
Can you show us that picture?
The picture's part of the app, that I filed.
Oh, you submitted that? Sorry, I don't remember.
But it's a digital sign, correct? So, the, the copy can be changed. And I think the issue is, is that it may have said "car wash" when you took the photo, but when Commissioner Montanez was actually on the site, it said something different because it is a digital sign that can be changed.
Do you know how long ago this was installed, this sign? Do you know when this sign was installed?
When this was taken?
No, when the sign was installed.
I have to look at the application. That was fine.
In the last, when, when were you at the site last?
It was within the last six months.
Last six months. But Commissioner Montanez?
I was there in April 28th.
Okay. So...
Of this year.
Of this year.
29th.
So, you were, okay, late April. So, is it possible this sign was installed subsequent to their visit?
No, this is the sign that was...
Yeah, it was a digital, it was a digital...
So, it's a...
No, I know.
Okay. Okay. So, this is a problem always about digital signs. You can't control the content. Okay. So, there's a permit for an accessory business sign. We just need to make it clear in the resolution that it's an accessory business sign and that no advertising is permitted. Okay? I mean, that's all we can do with this. This is really a DOB enforcement issue. So, okay.
I don't know how that happened, but...
Yeah. Okay. Well, you know, computers, whatever you want.
The other item that came up was this detailing, the banner that was put on the street. Well, detailing always existed at the site because it was called "Simonizing" back in, which indicated on the plans approved by the board back in 1999. So, they just changed the name from "Simonizing," which was a trade name, which became a generic name, but now they call it detailing. Detailing takes about four hours and the minimum charge for detailing is $189 for car. So, I don't think there's too many cars that are going to be detailed, but there are. And the way, and the way that they get into the area for detailing, I indicated, I submitted a plan indicating the path, drawings 8 and 9, how it, how it happens. In other words, after the car was dropped off by the owner and the employee drives it through, the car is washed, and they travel along Jericho Turnpike, up Blue Neck Parkway, through the 87th Avenue, 256th Street, and into the parking area, into the area for detailing. After the detailing's finished and the car is picked up, it then sits onto Jericho Turnpike and goes west.
But that scenario means then that you're taking the use off of the lot, right? You are, you are having an employee drive the car off the lot.
The employee drives the car.
All the way around the block and entering on the other side. And so, my problem yesterday was, was that you were now taking the, the use of this, this car wash. You're taking it out of its zoning lot and you're, you know, moving it around.
That's the way it's been going on for over 20 years.
I understand that, but now that I've seen it.
It's the only way you can get the car rid of it.
Why can't, why can't the operation be such that the car stays on the lot in some way? I mean, if you're only moving it to that, that lot, to, you know, to where the, I guess the other cars park, but into that lot to, to do the detailing, why can't it just move through the site? What's, what's the impediment?
The car has to leave the premises to get into the detailing area.
No, but isn't the...
There's a wall. There's a solid wall. There's no...
So, you can't go through.
And it's driven by an employee.
It's on the same zoning lot, though, I believe.
No, it's on the same, no, yeah. But you have to...
I have to drive it off.
The property is...
The other, the other path...
You can't, you can't take the business off the lot. So, I guess, why, why is that wall there? Can it be removed if you have access?
Yeah, like, that's, I think that's the question. Why can't there be an opening in that wall? Like, what's going on inside the building? Why you can't, I'm not sure exactly how this would work. Does that mean you have to back the cars back out and then into that parking lot area to come down?
I think it would make a structural alteration to accomplish that.
Because you've got a wall up and you've got a passageway and then you've got, it's like, I, I can't see how you can do that.
And where does the detailing occur? It occurs in the parking area or it occurs...
Well, what's the volume of the use? Because it's not a high volume.
That's not...
Wait, sorry. Where, where is the detailing at?
Occurs in that...
In accessory parking area.
Oh, it's done in that parking area?
It's done in the parking area, which is almost supposed to be actually for...
On drawing number 3.
It's done in the building?
There's no way to, after the car is washed, there's no way to get it into the detailing area because the flow of traffic is to the west. So, we can't make a left-hand turn and go into the detailing area. You've got to go around or make all these U-turns on Jericho Turnpike to come in.
That part's understood. I think what Mr. Hinkson's talking about is normally you would expect the function to stay on the lot, like you move, you drive the car around on this very large, weirdly shaped lot and you just stay there. You come to wash your car and then on the lot, you drive to the detailing. So, the idea that you have to come back into the city street system to return to the business is, is an odd...
But that's the way it's been done over 20 years. No one raised any questions about it before and the community, there's no problems or incidents with the community.
That, I mean, that's true. The community didn't comment on this, so.
I just still have problems with taking the, the use off of the lot to bring it back through the street system and then bring it back onto the lot.
Then you go into the next...
It would seem to me that there would be a way to be able to accommodate on the lot all of the activity without having to burden the street system.
That's not a... Does something happen, is the, does something happen for the detailing inside of that one-story and two-story structure that opens onto Jericho Turnpike? Or is that just a way to get out?
How much drawing is that?
I'm looking at...
Sheet 3, right?
Yeah. Three of nine.
Three of nine. So, is that where the, does the detailing happen in there, in that building? And it says, where it's, it says accessory parking and detailing of cars. Does it happen in there or in the parking lot?
The detailing is adjacent to the passageway and to the, the cleaning of the car, the washing of the car.
So, it's in the building. The detailing occurs in that building.
It doesn't happen in the parking lot.
I don't see any possible way to get the car, after it's washed, into the detailing area without going off the site.
Because when you're washing it, you come, you have to keep moving through the car wash.
You have to go all the way out back to Jericho Turnpike.
And then you're practically out. Yeah, I see.
There's no other way to do it. And it's been done that way ever since this has been going on.
It would mean you'd have to move, you'd have to move the car wash back or everybody would have to back up altogether.
Right. There's like no way to do it.
In the 99 plan, where it says "Simonizing," this is the way they got the car into that area.
Okay. It's been, it's been. And the neighbor, and importantly, I think the community hasn't had a problem with the traffic, so, which surprised me, but nevertheless, so, and it is an extension of a term of an existing very old variance.
And I guess what to look at is that it's, it's, it is sort of the second, second business in a sense in a, in a separate sort of part of the building.
Yes.
So, taking, you've got another entrant or a different portion of the, of the business.
Right. Okay. Is everybody else okay therefore? Are there any speakers on this? Okay. So, I would like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion to grant on condition that the accessory business sign not be used for advertising purposes. Right? So, on that motion...
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Item number 7, 80-05 BZ, 49 West 33rd and St. Manhattan. Isn't a German request on this?
Yeah, they wanted two months. I don't know if that was two months to submit or what, but so, let's just say, one, two. So, that would be September 20th hearing with a submission date on August 31st.
Appeals calendar, continued hearing items. Item number 8, 6713A, 9:45 Zoriga Avenue, the Bronx.
Ariel Holzer for the applicant. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. I monitored the executive session yesterday and it appears that I have not yet done my job in convincing you regarding the sign. There are some issues and I'm not sure frankly that I will succeed in doing so, but I would like to address a few things that I heard during the executive session that I think could use a little bit of clarification, if the board would allow me. All right. A note, I, I think the main hiccup, I would say, that the board is trying to deal with are the accessory permit filings during the 1980s, early 90s. And I am in agreement with the board that the situation is unseemly, maybe icky, that the, that the applicant would be the beneficiary of permits that had previously filed and gained the benefit, benefit of, and now, when it's convenient to them to disavow them and say that they were, that they were incorrect and improper and the board should, and they should be of no note. And I agree with the board on that. But the issue, I don't think that the issue is one of seamliness or, or whether it's icky, but it's whether you can create an alternative set of facts to match these permits. And I don't think that that would be proper either. I don't think that we could sort of change the facts or shove the facts into a neat box I don't think that we could sort of change the facts or shove the facts into a neat box so that they match the circumstances of the filings when it's pretty clear that the sign that existed there does not meet what the D O B or even the B S A would consider a valid accessory sign. If I went to the B S, the D O B now and tried to get that same sign as an accessory sign, ignoring the size limitations that are now in place that are different then, but assuming so, it would never get approved as an accessory sign. The product is not available for sale on premises, you cannot buy tobacco products on premises, there's an O A C that has control, that had control of the sign. It simply is an advertising sign that used the chaminier of accessory in order to, in order to ease its way to use. And I agree that it's unseemly, it's icky, it's, whatever term you want to use for it, but at the same time.
The term is fraudulent.
Right, exactly.
Unseemly, icky, I mean, there's an issue.
It comes to mind.
It's a fraudulent representation and it is a fraudulent sign and there's an issue of benefiting from that fraud and not cleaning hands and other other things. So let's call it what it is.
I have no problem if you want to call it that, I have no problem with that either. I just think that's wrong to decide and change the facts. I think we should deal with what the facts were and what they are and what the sign was rather than.
But fraud is among those facts. It's not, so your argument is it was not an accessory sign, it was always an advertising sign.
Right.
But another one of those facts is there was a fraudulent representation that called it an accessory sign for the benefit of the owner. So that is also a relevant fact.
It, I agree and it was a relevant fact in seventy-nine thirteen A where the board decided that, be it as it may, where the owner made various representations regarding the property that turned out to be false, not true and he derived the benefit, the board cannot simply change facts to meet those filings and applications. That's just not how it works.
I don't remember, you know, B S A cases, you know, just off the top. What, which?
Okay, that was a case involving where the property owner wanted to build a building across two zoning lots and needed the zoning lot merger obviously in order to do that and to get a C of O and claimed through both court documents and filings that he had done so, which turned out to be false and used to use general counsel's terms fraudulent. It claimed that he had done so in order to receive that C of O and it turns out that it was never done. And then the boards and the lots were never merged. And the board said we cannot basically create the facts that these lots are merged. So just, you know, the D O B was arguing that it should be considered merged.
I don't remember.
Okay. So that's basically my point in a nutshell and I think.
I'm not sure I understand what your point is in a nutshell.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The board can't sort of de facto or by decree merge lots that were not merged. That's different than the case here where you're asking the board to sort of recognize or disavow rather of previous fraudulent representations. So, and I'll read the case and brief the Commissioners, but I'm not sure that that's actually analogous.
I would say that that is analogous because we're dealing here with facts and it's, you look at the facts of this case and the facts involve the sign and you just ask yourself, if you divorce it from the filings for a minute and just look at the facts of the sign, is the sign an accessory sign? Does it meet what we would consider an accessory sign? I think the answer is no.
No, actually, that's not.
The use had to be lawful at the time and if there was a fraudulent representation, you're not going to get the benefit of that continuing.
No, but even independent of whether it was a fraudulent misrepresentation or fraudulent representation, then the fact was that many, many sign companies were renting amounts of space, whatever it was, in buildings.
Right.
And the buildings department was aware that the amount of space, that there was space being rented and actually, as I cited to yesterday and in the last hearing, in two thousand at the City Planning Commission hearings when it came to amending the signage regulations, there was testimony from the sign industry that believed that renting small amounts of space should be adequate to qualify the business for an accessory sign and that was the deal made with the landlord. So it isn't actually fraudulent. It was an agreement made in the industry that small amounts of space, and by the way, it doesn't require that tobacco products be sold. That was what you showed us, that lease where Philip Morris had a larger space that they rented and they stored tobacco product. They have to, you have to have a place to store the product.
I understand, but I, I'm sorry.
Right, so, no, but so, so a business carries on several different kinds of operations. If, for example, I find it totally plausible that you have fifteen hundred square feet puffed with cigarettes and there's all of these businesses all around that need cigarettes and so there's a truck that comes and distributes the cigarettes from there, why isn't that a legitimate business purpose and that D O B reasonably relied on as to which the accessory sign referred?
Right. I would, I think that fifteen hundred square feet would be not adequate for Philip Morris's purposes in terms of if they were bona fide using that space to sell cigarettes in the first place.
You might convince me more if it was a hundred fifty square feet, but it's fifteen hundred square feet, it's not a small amount of space.
To them, I think it's the minimus. To them, I think it would be the minimus.
Okay, but now that's a, that's kind of your personal opinion as opposed to how businesses operate.
Right, but.
Where they scatter storage around the city.
The way the law is written is that, the way at least or the D O B enforces the law is a product available, it turns on that it can be purchased at that location or that can be, that's available at that location for the consumer. So it's not just in terms of.
It doesn't say consumer.
No, it doesn't say consumer, but, and I'm sorry.
It doesn't actually say consumer and it is a business, if it's a business distribution center, that's legitimate use. Because the guy who has the little newspaper stand can't store fifteen hundred square feet of cigarettes nor would he want to actually.
All right, so in terms, let me just, accessories is a wide ranging, but advertising is pretty narrowly defined as a sign that directs attention to a business profession, commodity, service or entertainment conducted, sold or offered elsewhere than upon the same zoning lot. I would say that these products are not offered on this zoning lot. They may be used on the zoning lot, maybe, but I would not say they're offered on the zoning lot. If you go in there and saying, I want to buy some cigarettes.
There are offers on the zoning lot. It may not be an individual offering, but it's a business offering and it's an offering. It's not making a distinction between the kind of entity, it's an entity whether it's an individual or a business.
Is a B S.
And if we just go back, it sort of doesn't matter how we interpret it today, way back when, this was an agreed method that many, many, many different sign companies were pursuing and the buildings department was accepting. So to say, because otherwise it wouldn't work. Otherwise, the buildings department would have said, sorry, you know, you need to show us that you have a minimum of twenty thousand square feet or something like that on the site, otherwise it's not accessory. And the buildings department did not make that call knowing at the time that these were, this type of approach is being used by sign companies. So if the buildings department wouldn't accept it today, doesn't mean they didn't accept it back then. Therefore, I don't actually, I don't actually think it was perpetrating a fraud. It was, it was pursuing standard business practice at the time to legalize signs that had been ideally advertising signs now are accessory.
All right. I want to, I want to come back to this, but I just want to move on for a moment to a point made by Commissioner Montanes yesterday and it's a point that I actually am in agreement on in the theoretical basis, which is that Commissioner Montanes said that the D O B has limited amount of information and they shouldn't be held to past decisions if they don't have that information. They later, later gain that information and they could reach a more proper conclusion. So it's basically an evidentiary question of what is in their, in their auspices, what is in, what is in their knowledge and if they don't have knowledge of it, then, you know, it's not. I tried in my submissions, very much so to avoid that question. In fact, when I was discussing this with my researcher, I said, I want things that are obvious, that are, you know, don't do too much digging because the D O B is not going to be doing digging. They have what they have. And so one of the main case I pointed out in my last submission, ninety-three thirty Van Wijk, which had an accessory permit, an accessory lease, which, for cigarettes again, Philip Morris, these, we got this information from the D O B's registration information. This was part of their foil packet. It was in their information. It was part of their evidence that they looked over, assuming that.
But that's an O A C registration packet, right?
Right. That was what was submitted to the D O B for the registration, for the registration of this sign.
For registration pursuant to the new O A C regulations that have just been in existence for like four years or something, right?
Which, which is this sign.
Yeah, I understand that, but the standard that applied way back when, whenever this was that you had this lease, the eighties, was a different standard than the standard that's now looked at by D O B to determine whether you have a legitimate sign going forward.
We're talking about a nineteen seventy-eight lease there. They should be viewing in the same lens that they are viewing our case is what I'm saying. The lease is the same, the time period is the same, roughly the same. We're talking seventies instead of eighties, but I don't think there was much substantive change in the law between those two time periods. And they both tried to obtain permits regarding this registration. Their registration was approved. And so this is not a question of they didn't know, they didn't have knowledge of it, they're not aware of it. These are cases where it's right there, it's in front of their face, it's what they had, it's what they reviewed and they gave it the rubber stamp that it's approved. Similarly, in our case, the information regarding the permits and the leases were submitted in the initial filings in two thousand thirteen, three years ago. The D O B did not raise this issue, they did not raise this issue three years ago, they did not raise this issue last year when it came back up. They didn't even raise this issue in their previous filing before April, but they did, they raised it only in the, to make the argument that based on the permits, the sign had been moved, which we argue with. They didn't even try, attempt the argument that because of these permit filings, the sign should be invalid. It's only when the B S A sort of took that argument that they now are picking up the football and running with it. Use an analogy. But the point, the point of the matter is this hasn't been the rule, it's not been the way it's enforced. The D O B has recognized these sham leases and sham arrangements for what they are and has credited them as advertising signs in the past until our case. And I understand that the board may disagree with that and may disagree with that characteristic, but I feel that they should not create a divergence of law between what the D O B is doing and approving, that the B S A will never get jurisdiction over, and what it has jurisdiction over and can't, you know, and can't.
So, but what we're looking at is something that's very simple in the zoning resolution that talks about the discontinuity of use. So we don't have a lot of latitude there. If the use is discontinued for more than two years, you lose the non-conformity, the grandfathering, right? So where do we go? You presented evidence to us that showed discontinuity of use for ten years.
I would argue that, that based on past practices, it hasn't shown discontinuity. They've shown, based on what the D O B has recognized in the past, that this is a continuing of advertising use. It's a sham accessory sign, it's an advertising use and as unseemly and improper and fraudulent or not fraudulent as it may have been for these filings, they're using it as an advertising sign. That's what it was, that's what it continued to be and.
Even though you had a permit for an accessory sign.
Correct.
That's so confusing. Okay. All right, thank you. Any other, okay, thank you.
Kurt Steinhaus for the New York City Department of Buildings. Thank you for your consideration. We feel that there has been discontinuities.
Okay. Are there any? Yeah.
Please don't drop our mic.
Is that what it's called?
Can you explain the Van Wijk Expressway approval?
The Van, we would certainly look into that matter and if we felt that we had enough evidence, we would look into that.
So is it your position that, or maybe you don't know yet and that's something you need to go back?
Prosecutorial discretion or enforcement matters.
Right. But I mean, can you, can you talk about, or can you get, well, let's see, can you talk about whether, whether D O B has taken a position that these, what Mr. Holzer's been characterizing as sham leases were just that and that sort of D O B overlooking the accessories, accessory permits and viewing these as continuity of advertising sign?
Well, there would certainly be a difference between a sham warehouse situation where there are no actual business operations occurring on the premises and perhaps this situation where we don't have evidence, affirmative evidence that no, that no business operations were going on. And so we would distinguish it that way, that perhaps in some instances, we do know that there weren't actual business operations happening in a warehouse, but here we don't have affirmative evidence that cigarettes weren't being stored and distributed on this location.
Okay, that's fair. Anybody, any other questions? No? Okay, thank you very much. Are there any speakers on this? Yep? No? Okay. Do you want to come back? Anything you want to add?
I certainly, if the board wants it, I could look into evidence of whether there was actual storage there. Fifteen hundred square feet, I tend to doubt it. The Van Wijk Expressway lease, I believe, I haven't looked at it, but I think it's a hundred and fifty thousand square feet.
No, it's forty something.
It's forty something, forty-five thousand, you're right. You're right.
Right, but the fact that it's being used or not used today does not really cast any light on what happened back when this permit was issued, so.
I'm talking about that. I'm talking about that.
They don't have a lease there anymore.
There's not.
Right, yeah.
I don't know.
I have to say that that should have come up before, right?
Well, this whole question should, I would, as I've said before, I think if we were not being cynical about it, it should have come up three years ago.
Yeah, but it would, actually, I'd have to say, it was the board who noticed this. It wasn't necessarily, right? It was the board that looked at the leases and said, whoa, wait a minute. And then reminding ourselves of practices way back then and then finding a CPC report where the, the advertising community was saying, this is what we do and so we're the ones who brought it up and then you and the D O B had to respond to our new questions. So, you know, I don't think the D O B pulled this out of their hats to try to find another angle. We were the ones who said, uh-oh, it's an abandoned use.
I don't think they pulled it out of their hats to find another angle. I think that they didn't think it was an angle until the board sort of.
Okay, so, all right, so they didn't think it was an angle, but for us, the law's very clear for us about what, if it's abandoned, it's abandoned and the facts appoint to an abandonment for way longer than two years, I think, is my opinion. So anybody else want to add to this? Because I think we're going to close this now.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so for our motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanes?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Okay, so, does anybody have a problem with voting on this now? So this was an appeal to, what is it? Motion to grant. What?
It was a written amendment for determining continuity of use.
Okay. The continuity of use. Okay, so, so this is a motion to deny.
Yeah, so the motion is the board's conclusion that there's continued use.
Okay. So it's a motion to deny.
Yes, you can.
Yeah, on the continuity of use.
Right.
Right? Or you want to do.
Deny continuity.
Grant and.
You want to do it in the affirmative?
The motion is the board's finding that there's been continued use.
Yes, okay. Okay, so on the, on a motion to grant that use has been continuous, right?
Sure.
Is that?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
A motion to grant on continuity of use. Right. So on that motion, everybody got that?
Chair Promoter?
No.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
No.
Commissioner Montanes?
No.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
No.
Commissioner Chanda?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for all of your work.
Item number nine, two thirty-four fourteen A, seven thirty-eight East Sixth Street,
Morning, Madam Chair Commissioners, Marvin Mitzner, the applicant. We heard the comments of the board at the executive session. I'd just like to go over a few, a few things with you, a few FMA. The C of O in question here was obtained in the focus of nineteen eighty-nine and ostensibly it was issued because twenty units were combined into eleven units by creating openings between certain apartments, A B apartments and C D apartments. It also predicated upon the fact or the alleged fact that kitchens were removed, both gas lines and water lines capped and removed, creating these larger apartments and that the smaller apartments nearby were extinguished. As the predicate, yet six to nine months later in nineteen ninety, we have presented to this board leases and evidence of leases that show that the apartments were still occupied as twenty units, that the A B apartments were separately occupied by unrelated adults, as were some of the C and D apartments occupied by unrelated adults. We've also presented to this board records from the D H C R, Department of Housing and Community Renewal, based upon their findings of their officers, administrative officers, based upon hearing testimony that indicated, that indicated that there were three separate inspections done by D H C R inspectors in July of ninety-five, nineteen ninety-five, and April of nineteen ninety-six and in May of nineteen ninety-six.
Sorry, tell me, what's the dates again? Nineteen ninety-five, ninety-six?
Yes, July of ninety-five, April of ninety-six and May of ninety-six. And each of these, and they say that based upon the reports of these inspectors clearly indicate that twenty apartments exist. They went on to say that the inspections reveal that the equipment and floors and the bathrooms and kitchens. the bathrooms and kitchens had not been replaced or made as new, which meant that it was old, existing equipment. This is 95, six years after the CFO was issued and five years after the leases that evidenced 20 units. In addition, we've also provided to this board...
Can I just ask a question about that one?
Sure.
So, just with respect to the "made as new," so there is a decision by the Deputy Commissioner of DHCR in January 2000. So, it's after all of these different cases going back and forth with DHCR and subsequent to those inspection dates that says, and the question was, was there substantial rehabilitation of the building to qualify for a deregulation of the units, right? And there was work that was done that addressed virtually all of the major building-wide systems. However, the evidence submitted by the owner establishes only that the heating, gas supply, electrical intercom, and window systems were completely replaced. And then it says, contrary to the requirement of operational bulletin 95/2, the deficient plumbing system at the building was not replaced but addressed through repair work. Similarly, the work done to the kitchens, with the exception of the installation of new refrigerators and stoves, worked unto the kitchens, bathrooms, and individual apartment ceiling, wall, and floor system was, in essence, repair work. So, it's not as if nothing was done. There were systems that were entirely replaced and the one that's most significant for me is the gas supply was entirely replaced and the stoves were replaced. So...
Well, that does not speak at all to the notion that at least 10 kitchens were removed and the gas and water lines capped and made no use, which was a predicate to the 1989 CFO being issued. In fact, all it says is that the owner at the time maintained occupancy in those units that should have been single units, which were double units. And the DHCR, in fact, supported that notion, most recently in 2000, I believe it was, 2005 or later, that specifically found that apartments, for example, 5A and B, were separate rent-stabilized apartments. So, DHCR found that they were not combined. And that goes against the whole notion that the CFO, which is our argument, that the CFO reflected actual occupancy. It just isn't, doesn't, didn't, and doesn't.
So, but the issue was, prior to the CFO being issued, had the units been combined? And you have a letter from the plumber that's unfortunately only a paragraph long, is another...
We have two letters, actually.
Two letters, but they're very short, right? Which says that, based on his observation, the systems were old. But this is a DHCR inspection report, or the commissioner was summarizing the inspections and everything else, indicating that the entire gas supply system was replaced and the stoves were replaced. So, if they were replaced, and that's pursuant to what's described as an '84, '85... Described as an '84, '85 work description somehow. So, what it's indicating to me is that prior to the CFO being issued, the gas supply lines and the stoves had been replaced. So, then it was easy to imagine that they took out the stoves along with sinks. And then there was the plumbing inspector who DOB has explained to us, not the plumber himself, signed off on the work because it was sort of like a directive 14 for plumbing.
I'll get to that in a moment. That's not quite accurate. I'll get to that in a moment.
Something like that.
But taken in context, that statement by DHCR refers to the 1985 CFO and refers to work that was done prior to '89, work that was done in connection with the 20 units and not the theoretical 11 units. So, I don't think that proves anything other than maybe supporting our argument. But I will tell you that, and by the way, the plumber's letter, it's not just a plumber's letter. Here is an individual who was a DOB plumbing inspector for a number of years and he has 30-plus years of qualifications. And he's indicated in his letter that he saw no evidence of capping and recapping or actually capping of the gas lines and water lines. I think that's significant. What's also significant is what we don't have. What we don't have is any lease, any lease that was entered into by one individual or one family for any of the A/B or C/D apartments. None throughout the entire 25, 26 years. We've searched, none exists. Second thing that doesn't exist is a DOB record, a record of a DOB inspection that verified the removal of the gas lines and water lines. There is no record of that through any of the microfiche or anything else of that nature. All you have, as best that you have, as best you have, is a blank piece of paper without any notations on it, signed off by the architect, not the plumber.
Okay.
Whatever that means and however he did it and for the reason he did that, whatever that's significant, it doesn't alter the fact, doesn't change all these other facts we presented. And the failure of a DOB inspection report in the microfiche system, I think, is significant. Where is it? Why is that the only document that's missing from the record if in fact it ever existed? And we don't believe it ever did.
I don't know.
We have, most importantly, we have a situation here where you have a condition, existing condition, where you have seven units occupied in this building. And if the CFO is not modified, what do we do with these seven tenants? Where do we put them? Do we get rid of them? We can't because DHCR won't let us.
Why do you have to get rid of, if you have the rights to 11 units and you have seven tenants, I'm not understanding the mathematical difficulties.
Well, I presented this to the board. I don't know if you've seen it.
Right. But that's more like a work, sort of work that out, right? It's not like you have too many tenants to distribute in the building.
We have...
The question would be very different if you had 15 tenants, then I don't know what the answer would be.
We have a rent-stabilized tenant occupying a certain amount of square feet, which is apartment, let's say 5A, for example.
Right. The two 5As are stabilized, right?
Right. Okay. Right. So, now, what do we do with that tenant? We leave him in there? And then what do we do with 5B?
It's 5B.
Which is the theory of the combined apartment, which doesn't exist. I mean, the situation is intolerable.
But it seems, yeah, it seems to me that this is...
Yeah. I mean, first of all, I think what we need to keep in mind is the DHCR document was really, should be looked at in the context of the fact that whether exemption from the rent stabilization be allowed or not and based on that, the work that was conducted was evaluated. And DHCR made that determination that not adequate work was done to qualify it to be exempted from it. So, therefore, today, the rent stabilization still holds.
Right.
So, with that in mind, it's up to you and the tenants and DHCR to figure out how to checkerboard the tenants around and move them into these 11 units and continue the rent stabilization of the tenants.
But they aren't.
I think what, to me, is very disturbing is that we have this one set of argument that has been presented with the same set of document that says, well, there were 20 units. But at the same time, the leases that were signed, that were signed by the previous owner and that practice has been continued by the current owner, shows that the doubled-up units have been used as a way of renting the apartments. So, in some document, it shows that it's been used as a doubled-up, but then for other purposes, it's being shown as it is still a single unit. So, I think the DHCR document is solely for the purpose of evaluation of rent stabilization and DOB's document is to determine the CFO and the number of units. And I think that's how I will distinguish those two documents and use those documents to make this determination.
Right. And in addition to which, when DHCR rule in one of the cases, not this one that I'm holding, it indicated that the landlord did not make the case for removing these apartments from stabilization, therefore, they need to continue stabilized. Therefore, the tenants had a right to contest the rents that were currently being charged and request rollbacks and not to mention damages, et cetera. So, and then it doesn't sound like that was ever done. So, it seems to me that the solution isn't a solution for the BSA to make. The BSA is simply deciding whether or not the CFO as it stands is valid. And if it decides that the CFO as it stands is valid, then it's up to DHCR, HPD, and a court to distribute the tenants properly according to the law, which, you know, that was the thing. We wanted more information about what are the laws that control with DHCR? Like, was there, was there something in the law that says that DOB can't issue a CFO where it would indicate the removal of rent-stabilized tenants? And the fact that you haven't given it to us or any kind of case law to support it indicates to me that maybe it doesn't exist or that research might lead to something undesirable and so not submitted. So, in the absence of that...
We wouldn't do that.
No, I just don't know because I would expect you to submit us case law. I would think there'd be so many cases on subjects of landlords improperly removing stabilized tenants that where DHCR somehow or other is involved in the suit.
Yeah. There are tons of cases involving that.
Mm-hmm.
But it doesn't speak to this particular issue. We're not talking about DHCR's control over the rent-stabilized apartments. We're talking about what the condition of the building is vis-à-vis the CFO. And that's a very different thing.
No, no.
So, because DHCR found that, for example, 5A and 5B were separately occupied. They are separate rent-stabilized units according to DHCR. That is inconsistent with the CFO. That in and of itself is inconsistent with the CFO, if nothing else.
Okay. It may be inconsistent with the CFO, but it doesn't mean the CFO was improperly issued at the time it was issued.
It means, yes, it means we've presented all the other evidence that shows that these units were never combined. There is not one lease that shows them rented out to any single occupant.
What do we do about the hole in the wall?
What hole in the wall?
The one that connects living room A to living room B and makes it into one unit.
I don't know that the hole in the walls exist in any, I don't know that there are.
We have photographs from the tenants and their apartments.
I think one. You know, the tenants, that's another good point. The tenants themselves have verified that the manner in which these apartments were leased, okay, were as separate apartments, even though they used combined leases, but it was leased as separate apartments. And each tenant was responsible for only his or her portion of the rent.
Except that we also have information that says that if the rent was 1,400 on this side and 1,400 on that side, you're over the 2,500 and then it's a deregulated apartment. And so...
That was the prior owner's scheme of view.
But that was continued by the current owner also. I don't think that practice was, if that had changed, then I think we may have a different discussion here. But the fact that that same lease practice was continued by the current owner goes to show that every effort was made to deregulate the units from rent stabilization by showing a higher rent amount at the same time, renting it out to two individual independent people.
And removing stabilization, even though DHCR had given instructions to retain the building as a stabilized building and to give the tenants the rights to ask for a rollback, right? Which would have been very costly, no question, if they had a rollback.
But if you want to talk about the current owner, and we've said this before, I believe we've said this in our papers, but I'll reiterate again, the current owner is prepared to make all these apartments, all 20 units, rent-stabilized units at a rent that puts them into rent stabilization. It's simply...
The BSA doesn't have any control over this. We can't make it, we can't make it a condition or, it's just not, it's not before us, frankly. What's before us is...
But I'm making...
Whether it was a valid CFO at the time it was issued and we're not in a position to direct HPD to do anything or DHCR to do anything. And so, I think that the big issue is ultimately, how does this get resolved in terms of the tenants and the property owner? That's for those agencies and a court to work out. But I do want to make clear that, because I did read some of the papers on the lawsuit that began and then seems to have been abandoned in 2013, that it would not be if we decided that the CFO holds, it would not be that we're in any way recommending that the tenants be evicted, in other words, to support the landlord's position that the tenants be evicted because in violation of the CFO. No. That there are 11 units and the tenants have rights under the rights of tenants regulated by the law and then it's up to the court and those agencies to figure out how to distribute them in the building, however that works.
But from a practical perspective, you're suggesting that if these existing tenants occupy half of the units, then we have to terminate the use of a lot of units in the building. And that puts the owner in a very precarious situation.
No, you can combine units.
That's unsustainable. Can't combine them.
Why can't you combine units? I don't understand. People do it all the time.
I've just indicated, I've shown you the sheet before.
No, but that's the sheet that doesn't show reality of, I mean, doesn't provide solutions. Instead, it says, "It's not possible because this tenant's next to this tenant. If tenants agree, if the court directs, tenants can be relocated." And maybe there's, I can't speak for what the rents are because obviously these were supposed to have been stabilized units as far as the record seems to point. There's a lot of work to do. I'm not, you're going to be busy for a very long time.
If the owner can sustain the building, because what you're suggesting is that we have seven tenants that will occupy seven units, right, seven half-units, if you will, which means that now we have to take all the remaining units and turn them into four units. It's not a possibility.
Why? Why can't you just combine the units to make 11 like the plans and like the chair said, move the tenant that's in the half a unit to a full unit of their own?
Because the leases don't allocate...
You could change the leases.
But the leases are within your control.
And the rents will be doubled.
The leases are within your control.
Well, we don't know if the rent is going to be doubled. That would be the decision of DHCR and the courts. The rents may not get doubled. You're hoping the rents would be doubled, but that doesn't mean they will be.
So, are you suggesting now that the tenants that are unstabilized will get twice as much space for the same rent they're paying now?
Look, I don't know.
Is that a good suggestion?
It could be.
That's an absurd assumption.
That's not our purview and it's not within what we're looking at.
But getting back to what you're looking at, let's look at the evidence. And I presented the evidence. Forget all that.
Right.
Go back to the prime evidence. Was this an application that was filed that was, that did not contain any misrepresentations in terms of what was actually done to this building? And we presented the evidence that shows that even after the CFO was issued, there were 20 units in this building. That's the evidence. And on that basis alone, this board has the power to modify the CFO. It has that power under the charter and it has that power to stand in the shoes of DOB to modify the CFO.
We actually don't have that evidence. What we have is an application made and filed with drawings showing a very easy combination of units by making one hole in each wall between the living rooms and the removal of a stove, really, that's all you had to do, was removal of a stove and a sink on one of them. And then their return, which could have, because who knows why all of this happened? We all have our conjectures about why this was done, but a sign-off by an architect, a licensed professional, and issue...
We don't know. A presumed sign-off, because I don't know what that piece of paper means.
Well, the Department of Buildings showed us it comes from a docket book?
Yes.
And that's their standard, that was their standard procedure? That's what they showed us.
I heard an attorney for DOB make assertions. I did not hear any evidence as to what occurred in 1989 with respect to these docket books.
Well, we can say the same about the, I mean, we're assuming evidence presented is valid evidence. We can't look behind it and search and we don't crawl around in the buildings department's archives nor in your client's archives. So, the materials that are submitted to us, we take on face value. And DOB did provide us with a cover of that ledger sheet so that we understood the context because we also said, "This is a page floating in nowhere." And they gave us a page that shows the context.
That was dis... That was disconnected from the ledger book. I have no idea if it was a single unit. I have no idea.
You're suggesting DOB made up this material?
I don't know what DOB submitted. I don't know, I have not heard from any credible person at DOB as to what occurred in 89 or what could have occurred in 89.
And in terms of that, you know, foil is available to you. If you didn't, aren't satisfied with the materials that DOB presented, you could have gone into DOB's records yourself and tried to find contradictory information. You didn't provide us with anything.
We've checked, we've checked the, we've checked the microfiche records and that's how we determined that there's no evidence of any inspection being done in connection with the issuance of the C of O that shows the actual reduction in units from 20 to 11.
No, but that's not what the inspection had to do. All the inspection does is it signs off that the work resembles the drawings. That's the point of an inspection. And if it's a self, if it's essentially self-certified, then the architect can say, "The work as I drew occurred." And you can say that the architect was lying or whatever, but we don't have any information to that effect. And because the modification was so slight and because just the opening in the wall and because we have photographs from the tenants showing the openings in their wall, I mean, if you're reverting this back to a single independent units, you sheetrock over and you plaster and it goes away. Why would you leave the door? Some of them would just have like a plywood covering. I mean, it doesn't even make any effort.
No, they were connecting, the prior owner made connecting doorways, as was evidenced by some of the photographs we submitted.
Yes, right. Made connecting doorways. So, that was what's shown on the plans. So, therefore the units were connected, therefore there was a, there might have been a minute when, prior to the C of O being issued, while the inspection was being signed off, it was one unit, right?
Not unless...
Then the landlord decided, uh-oh, made a mistake, or aha, I have my C of O, now I'm going to try to evict all the tenants. Whatever the motive was, he succeeded in evicting a lot of tenants and raising the rents. And now, I think, I think we're, we got, you know, we've talked about this, we're sort of eating a dead dog.
No, well, if I may, the, irrespective of the opening in the wall, the kitchens would have had to been removed. The gas lines and water lines have. There would have been a capping at the gas meters and Con Ed would have removed those gas meters. None of that occurred.
Did you give us Con Ed records?
We contacted Con Ed and they will not release their records without a subpoena. And we've asked this board...
Right, so we asked you for, you keep saying that we never had any information from Con Ed that the meters were removed, weren't removed.
They weren't removed, they're in place.
They're in place now.
They're in place as they were.
We don't, I don't know that.
You don't have anything that, it didn't really says that in 1989, at the time of the C of O, that they were there. You don't have, it's unfortunate, but you don't have anything that says that. You just have after the fact information.
But we do have a...
People drawing suppositions about what might have happened. But you don't have anything that is dated at that time that shows that this C of O is invalid.
Now, but we do have...
Or that it was invalid when it was issued, rather.
We do have a letter from our plumber that talks about that.
But that's conjecture. And this is...
It's a part of professional opinion.
This DHCR report is a contempor, well, not contemporaneous, but at least closer in time that indicates that there was work done that replaced the gas supply and replaced the stoves. That indicates to me that the plumber is mistaken, that maybe it was replaced using really old materials, which by the way, in that time, in the late 80s in the Lower East Side, believe me, there was lots of stuff done with old equipment and material. So, I wouldn't be surprised if the work was done that wouldn't meet today's gas supply code. So, I don't know, I'm just guessing, again, based on...
Once again, what you're referring to relates to the 85 C of O, not the 89 C of O.
But if the, if the gas supplies were replaced and the stoves were replaced, then it's not, doesn't make sense, your plumber's report, that the materials that are in place hadn't been, couldn't have been used in the last 30 years or something like that. Because it says right here...
Even assuming that, that's a fact. If that was done pursuant to the 85 C of O, that's what they did to get the 20 units, not to go down to 11 units.
No, I'm a little confused. I mean, the DHCR document was, states that when they did this check, they identified these checks were done, these replacements happened, and they happened with regards to addressing the C of O, and that was done in 84, 85. Based on that, DHCR still determined that the work still was not adequate enough to meet it.
Right.
So, at that time, whether the information was correct or not, the record that we have there for us, DHCR states this work, according to their understanding, was done for, to meet the C of O requirement, and that was done in 84, 85, even though the inspection was done March 94.
No, I don't, I like to review that. I don't feel this is a case.
Well, that's what the document says.
But that's, I don't believe that's a case.
No, no, they, but that work was, and based on that, all the gas line and the electrical line replacements were done.
To meet 11 units or 20 units?
Well, to meet the 11 units, to meet the C of O.
No, 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 not for the 11 units. It was done for the...
20.
The DHCR didn't get involved in whether there were 11 units. They came to the site and there were 20 units in the site in 1995, right? That's what they were looking at. The landlord submitted information, there were inspections of 20 units. We're not denying that there have been 20 units since the tenants have been around to document that, right? But the question is, were there 11 units at the time that the C of O was issued? And it looks as if there were 11 units, even if it was only long enough for the C of O to be issued, there were 11 units. And then, whatever the motivation was of the property owner at the time, he said maybe, aha, now I have my method, now I'm going to go about evicting all the tenants. Maybe that was his whole plan. But so then, you have to live with the results of your scheme, right? And by the way, he did really well with his scheme. So, for a very long time, he was getting much larger, higher rents than he should have done and has a largely vacant building now.
I would just like to ask, to me, the easiest way to prove your point would say that the DOB issued the permit in error because there never should have been less than 20 rent stabilized units.
Right.
And then just to prove to us legally that that's the case.
But we asked that last time.
Otherwise, I don't, otherwise, I don't really see how you're going to, you know, it's just like...
That the law doesn't allow that.
Right.
That was the issue. That was why the case of Burn v. BSA was such an interesting case. I thought that was helpful to provide, but it didn't actually prove your case because that was a loft board case. And that was where loft laws, which is a construction law, says that the floors had to have looked like this in order for the C of O to have been issued. And the floors didn't look like this before the C of O was issued, therefore invalid, right? But we don't, we don't have any statutes, any case law, anything to indicate that DOB doesn't have the authority to issue a C of O when there are rent regulated apartments at risk or being eliminated through the modification. And that was, we asked you to give us that last time. And so, that you didn't give us that puts us, sort of directs us that there must not be such a thing. And we've done our own independent research, we haven't found it, so...
But the Burn case, you mentioned the Burn case. The Burn case is instructive. Forget about the deals with the loft law. The Burn case is instructive in supporting the notion that this board can modify a C of O if in fact what was done was not consistent with what was actually, what the actual use was.
No, but that's not what Burn stands for. It stands for the proposition that if DOB didn't have the authority to issue the C of O at the time, then the C of O can be declared invalid. That's a great case if you can develop a parallel argument in the case of rent regulation.
Well, but the appellate division had an interesting quote, which I may. The appellate division said that the whole purpose behind having BSA modify the C of O is to avoid a situation where an owner can file whatever papers are necessary to obtain a C of O regardless of their accuracy, okay? Securing the knowledge that so long as the renovations required are possible to do, the owner will be able to retain the C of O. That's what the court cautions against. And what I'm suggesting here is, what I'm suggesting here...
No, 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 wait a second before you go. That restatement referred to the idea that the changes to the apartments were slight that were needed, like installing a sink someplace and that kind of thing. And that that could have been cured later, after the C of O was issued. And the court wanted to say, oh no, if the rule is that the work has to be substantially complete prior to the issuance of the C of O and compliant with law, then you can't start, you can't make it substantially complete after the C of O is issued. So, that, yeah.
But what I quoted, but my quote is still a valid principle that the appellate division enunciated. And that is, if you have a C of O that's based upon some fraudulent misrepresentation or fraud in representation, as you corrected in part, some fraud in representation, then that C of O should be modified and the board has a power to do that. That's what that case said. That's part of what the rationale of the appellate division was. And it's equally applicable in this case. Because that's what really happened here, based upon the evidence we have and the evidence we presented, right?
I don't think we have any evidence. You would have had to have something that occurred in 1989 at the issuance of that C of O that proved that it never should have been issued in the first place, that there was a fraud going on. And you don't have that.
We have what we do...
You allege it, but you can't...
What we do have, we have supplied those leases in 1990, which is only six or eight months later. And I don't think this board is suggesting that the owner actually created these 11 apartments, removing kitchens and plumbing and everything else under the sun, and then entered into a lease or negotiated a lease that was entered into a few months later.
So, it's not the board's position to suggest anything? It's for you to make your affirmative case that that didn't happen? So, goodbye.
Yeah, but the suggestion is still a suggestion. And a suggestion leads to a conclusion. And a conclusion leads to a result.
Thank you. Okay, I think...
There were a lot of suggestions made here by the board.
Okay, I think, I think we, yeah. All right. I learned there was something in a, what is it, a facilitator thing? There's something called an Elmo, where the little creature of Elmo from Sesame Street is held up to say something like, "Enough already." I think we've been there, so, holding up Elmo. Okay, are there any speakers on it? Well, the Department of Buildings already spoke. Are there any speakers on this?
No, no.
No, no, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Department of Buildings.
Speaking of the Department, I'm not quite sure what their interest is at this point in arguing against our application.
Why do they have to have an interest? I mean, they have an interest, it's their C of O. It's their job in the city.
Benjamin Hollinggass on behalf of the Department of Buildings. Madam Chair, I'm just the board, good morning. In the interest of Enough Already, I will try to keep this very short. Even if the case of Burn v. BSA stood for the proposition, that the appellate claims it does, is still fail to produce any contemporaneous evidence from 89, as the board has pointed out. Furthermore, DHCR accepted the reduction in the number of rent regulated units. The fact that DHCR refused to take the units out of rent regulation because of the alterations that occurred in 89 doesn't rise to the level, or because they didn't rise to the level of substantial investment in the property hardly proves that the reduction didn't occur. And actually, the fact that this was not a substantial rehabilitation sort of bolsters the point we've made previously about the limited nature of the work involved, which you've already touched on this morning. You've mentioned previously that these were wire units, they could have very easily been removed and stored in the basement. All of the fixtures frankly could have just been chucked in the basement and brought back out in who knows how much time they needed to take them out later after the C of O was signed off. Further, as the board pointed out yesterday, while DHCR may have once found that the buildings did not comply with the number of rent regulated units, today, according to DHCR records, there are only three regulated units in the building. What's more, there are only seven units in the whole building that's currently occupied. A dubious position throughout this case has been that the evidence appellate has adduced is simply insufficient to prove that the 89 C of O was invalid at the time of issuance, and that remains our position. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Thank you. Are there any speakers on this? Okay, no speaker. Okay, anything you want to add?
Yeah, sure.
That's new? I mean, no, it's new. You didn't say already that's in response to specifically DOB?
Yes, yes, I will. You make reference in the DHCR document you quoted, and unfortunately, I don't have it in front of me and I'd like to at least take a closer look at it, but I don't have it in front of me. But it refers to, I think what it refers to in terms of gas lines were the installation of individual gas heaters in each of the A, B, C, D apartments, which was done at that time. So, that further bolsters the whole notion that these were separate units with separate gas heaters so that each individual tenant in that A, B, C, D apartment, the control of the heat.
In 1995, at the time of the inspection, and in 2000, at the time of the decision by the commissioner of HCR.
And I think...
After the C of, the C of O was issued. So, if you could have given us a document that was contemporaneous with the C of O, that would have been something that I think we could consider. But so far, we've sort of danced around the year of the C of O and we haven't been able to come up with anything that would indicate that the C of O is invalid because the information was incorrect in some way.
Not a question of the C of O being invalid.
And actually, in support of the C of O, then you've got the docket books that were signed, and I hate to admit it, but I go back that long, and I remember signing a couple of those. So... It's the ghost in the system.
As you were saying.
As I was, I'm going to turn this back on, hopefully it won't listen. Okay, so as I was saying, I remember having to sign those books. And indeed, there may not be, you know, some great volume of evidence, but I do think that what the building department has shown us is indicative of how things were signed off at that time. So, I have still not seen anything that is contemporaneous with that C of O that tells me that the C of O should not have been, should not have been approved. So, I, I can't help you.
But apart from the sign off, or the alleged sign off, would there not have been a C of O inspection?
There are, well, the professional who signed off would have had to have done the inspection. So, they signed, they signed off after they inspected.
Well, no, that was not, that's not what was done here. If you take that document in its best light, all it is is a signature by an architect signing off on a particular plumbing work. There is no, it doesn't relate to the sign off on the C of O. It's not a C of O inspection.
But then, if you don't have the C of O inspection, you can't get the C of O. There's no way of issuing a C of O.
Exactly. So, where is the C of O inspection?
So, if the C of O was issued, there's an inspection. And I would gather that if the architect signed on the plumbing, which, you know, he did, whatever it was plumbing associated with the certificate of occupancy, with the application. So, I don't see why that wouldn't have happened. And this, because if it didn't, the C of O wouldn't have appeared before us.
It wasn't sort of spontaneously...
Yeah, there's no, unless you can show that, you know, over time, this sort of thing happened, I, you know, from my experience, you signed off on everything that you needed to sign off, on all of the inspections that you as the plumber or the electrician or the, which I now control the inspection, you signed off. And then you signed, you know, you signed your building notice or your alteration, you sign that, it's been done, you hand that in, and it turns into a certificate of occupancy. You remember the old alteration form?
Yes, there is. But there's also, but there's also the step of a C of O inspection. Apart from the controlled inspection sign offs, there's a C of O inspection.
But you've suggested this before, that the C of O just sort of spontaneously appeared. It obviously didn't, C of Os aren't easy to get. That's why there are so many buildings that don't have them, right? So, you have to go to great lengths to get one. And so, it seems as if, based on the evidence...
And so it seems as if, based on the evidence, those great lengths were gone to. Drawings were filed, work was done, an architect signed off.
Drawings were filed.
Drawings were filed, work was done, holes in walls to show, and an architect signed off. Right? And by the way, architect signing off on a capping of plumbing was probably allowed because there was no new plumbing installed. So this was really minor work. We had talked about that also. The amount of work that needed to be done in order to do this was so minor, literally a hole in a non-bearing partition and a door, minor work. And the capping of plumbing, which is again, minor work. So the fact that there wasn't a major inspection or that didn't show up, I don't know about how that worked, but the idea that the architect might have been able to sign off on that wouldn't surprise me in 1989, actually.
Well, the capping would have been done in two places, both in the unit and at the meter.
But that's Con Ed's job.
No, no. It's just part of the capping of the line. You can't leave a gas line running through the pipe up into the apartment. You've got to cap it at the meter.
At this point, I expect Bill Murray to show up, and this just becomes Groundhog Day. I mean, we've gone... We have covered this ground many, many times. I'd leave it to the discretion of the board that we are getting to the point where I'm not sure it's useful.
Okay. So thank you. So I would like to close this. So for a motion to close?
Chair Pramodar?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Shatley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Okay. And I would like to take this to a vote, if that's okay with everybody. But before I bring to a vote, I just want to make it clear so that it's in the record that the only... That the board does not have the authority to direct HPD or DHCR, obviously, a court to make any decisions on the part of how tenants are distributed in the building, or their rents, or the size of their apartments, and so on. But this is in... This vote is in no way to be construed as the board's, say, support for or endorsement of the landlord's position that was taken in papers that we saw filed, or let's say, indexed. I guess they were... I don't know if they were ever filed with the court. It was just an index number assigned. That because the unit count is different than what the C of O says, it should entitle the landlord to request eviction of the tenants. It's for the proposition that the court, the agencies, the housing agencies decide how the tenants should live in the building. And so we're not endorsing any kinds of eviction of tenants. Okay? Okay, so for a motion to... We always go on the affirmative, to grant the appeal to revoke the C of O?
Chair Pramodar?
No.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
No.
Commissioner Montanez?
No.
Commissioner Shatley Brown?
No.
Commissioner Chanda?
No.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Item number 10, 16715A, 137 West 86th Street, Manhattan.
Is everybody okay?
Oh, we got to break the...
Oh, yeah.
You okay? You want a break?
No, no, no. I'm still energetic.
Okay.
All right. We're at the executive session, and we have supplied revised drawings.
Yes.
The revised drawings show the enlargement sprinkler. It also shows extra sprinkler heads around the opening between a convenience stair, which is similar to a Delu system, which is acceptable. It also shows that stair to be steel rather than wood.
Right. And it clarified some details also. There were lots of details that were made clearer about what the construction method would be on the partitions.
Yes, that's correct.
That was something else we asked for. Okay, so the only thing that we were still waiting for was a CCD one response from the O B about the wood cladding on the stairs, because fire department was very uncomfortable with that?
I think the fire department may have some...
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, and just one other thing before the fire department. And the L P C certificate of no effect makes a confusing statement, which I understand why they do that, because it's standard. That says that there's no grandfathered extension, and you're like, huh?
If anything, they were referring to the enlargement being a rear yard extension. Is the best I can tell. It's a confusing statement.
I just know the rules about C N Es versus C of As. The staff doesn't have the authority to issue a certificate of no effect, because this comes from the staff level, right? If there's also a rear yard extension, then the commission has to look at whether the bill... There's too much on the bill. So I'm uncomfortable with this being... And we can't vote on something until L P C signs off. So we need to make sure.
But they have signed off. They have the...
No, no. The C N E has a caveat that says as long as there's no grandfathered extension. So since we're... yeah. We need to clarify that, because I don't believe we have the authority to vote on this until L P C has signed off.
That's fine.
Okay?
I have... I'll contact L P C and get clarification.
Okay, okay.
And please put on your drawings, the storage loss that exists.
We have... I thought we had.
I think it's showing in the section, but not in the plan.
But not in the plan. So and you're right, it should say non-habitable space, you know, et cetera, but it's not in the plan.
Okay, so we have a little time because of the L P C. We can close this, but we need to work out those little points.
That's fine.
And then the fire department with the CCD one. Yeah.
Good morning. Madam Chair, Commissioner is Anthony Scuduto, Fire Department. Yeah, with respect to the sprinkling on the duplex, the installation of a Delu system would be adequate alternate solution. And we appreciate the installation of the stairway, metal stairway as opposed to wooden stairway. So that's acceptable.
For the connection.
For the connection between. I did some research, and I found in the M D L, it's not the direct application, but it's satisfactory, at least for my interest in this. In the converted dwelling section requirements in the M D L, there's all the way down towards the bottom is a section on wainscoting. And what it approves is it allows wainscoting to be... To remain in public hallways if the fire ratings are approved, so that wainscoting can be removed and then reapplied. But then it also states that wainscoting could remain in a sprinkled public hallway and stairway. So based on that, I think the conditions here would answer the concerns that we had in that we believe now that the wainscoting could stay.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So and the sprinkling in the public hall?
Is it effectively the solution?
Okay.
So again, it's in the M D L converted dwellings section. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, that made it easier. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, so we just need to clarify the L P C issue, and as long as your added show the loss in the floor plans.
Right.
And are there any speakers on this? So for a motion to close?
Chair Pramodar?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Shatley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Just one thing. There was a note, the two-hour conflicting notes, three-hour, two-hour?
They fixed that.
They fixed it? Okay, just want to make sure.
Okay, so then, it shouldn't take you long to... It just... well, it might take you long.
Well, I need to get something out of L P C.
Yeah.
So you know better than I do.
Yeah, so if it's a C of A, I'm sorry to report, it's going to be a trial.
It's not going to be a C of A.
Okay, so you're going to make a phone call?
Yes.
And find out what's what? You know, one of the reasons they might have said that... I shouldn't have closed. Never mind. Never mind. Okay.
It's off the record, so you can say it.
Never mind.
Okay.
I can always tell counsel. Okay. So let's see. Let's defer... I mean, set a decision date for August 23rd. That should give you enough time.
That's fine. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. There's no submission?
The plans. The plans.
Oh, oh, sorry, plans. Just right before...
We'll get it.
Yeah.
Zoning calendars, decision items, item number 11, 9914 B.C., 432, 434, West End, First Street, Manhattan.
Oh.
Do you want a chair?
Sorry?
Do you want a chair?
No, fine. Hopefully, this will go. Good afternoon, Ali Carreri for Greenberg Trig L L P.
So I think we have everything. So then for... Did we close this already?
Yep.
Yeah, we did. So for a motion to grant?
Chair Pramodar?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Shatley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I know it was hard.
Item number 12, 3415 B.C., 2316, Ocean Parkway, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon. Eugene Pillman on behalf of Eric Palagin Casino.
For a motion to grant?
Chair Pramodar?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Shatley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 13, 25115 B.C., 127, West 26th Street, Manhattan.
He's going to defer. Yeah, okay. August 2nd, okay. So we need to defer a decision, and I don't know. We can defer it to August 2nd even.
Yeah.
It's just a quick...
August 2nd?
Yep.
Continuing hearing items, item number 14, 214 B.C., 4605 Parsons Boulevard, Queens.
Hi.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Chris Wright on behalf of the applicant. I attended your review session yesterday. There were no questions, I don't believe. Materials presented. I did come down here with the project team to... Well, we had proposed making a presentation, but I can follow your lead. I was just going to summarize what we'd submitted and try to show what we upgraded. The architect was here to talk about the scale of buildings with the scale... And Mr. Heineman was here to talk about the...
No need. We had no questions. You had a submission.
Thank you for bringing everybody. I think that's very helpful.
It's great that they came, and we appreciate it. But all the issues, the parking issues, the dome, the landscaping around perimeter, that's what we asked for. So I think... Are there speakers on this who people would like to speak?
Yeah, there are speakers.
Please come.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please state your name to the record, and you'll be limited to three minutes, please. I'll show you elected officials.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair Commissioners. My name is Royston from State Senator Tony Vowles' office. He sent a statement for me to read. I submit these comments to the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals to be considered for the body's final report and determination on the variance application for 4605, Parsons Boulevard, Flushing, New York, 11355. As you should recall, the application proposes to construct a house of worship containing 4,991 square feet of floor area with a floor area ratio of 1.41. This would far exceed the 0.5 floor area ratio and 2,384 square feet allowed as of right in the existing R2 district. The proposed facility will be completed completely out of context with existing physical environment of detached single-family houses and the low-density residential neighborhoods. As you are aware, changes were made to this application on most occasions, most recently on June 7. Unfortunately, I was only made aware of these changes on July 11, 2016. As such, I am requesting that the board adjourn this matter to a later date so that I may have adequate time to review these changes to address them knowledgeably.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next speaker, please. State your name. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, everyone. My name is Tyler Castle. I'm with Community Board Seven. The good folks of the Casino Park Civic area have come to these hearings to speak against this application because it presents a very serious problem for the community. It's too big, it betrays too far on all sides. It's two and a half times the height of the small home next door, and won't accommodate all those who want to pray there. It was built nearby in a higher zone that allows a larger build-out, you wouldn't be here to protest. Many of the problems have been pointed out during the course of these hearings. I want to address two major problems, the parking waiver. Parking waiver does exist for congregations that live within three-quarters a mile of their house of worship, but it exists for religions such as the strict observant Jewish faith, where members are forbidden to drive, or ride on Sabbath, or turn on electric lights, or even light a match to cook. If they can't drive, they don't need parking spots, understandably so. However, most temples and synagogues also have parking lots because they have other functions there. The Holy Quran may give blessings to those who walk, but it does not forbid driving or riding. The mosque representatives have already told us that between 5% and 10% of their members will drive. 5% of 420 members means 21 parking spots. They will need ample parking for those who drive, like they do at other mosques around the city. They should not be granting the parking waiver because driving is not forbidden. Granting the waiver would also set a bad precedent by allowing future applicants to ask for this waiver whenever they wanted to skirt the parking requirement. Please do not do this. Programmatic needs. We don't believe that the use of five square feet per person is adequate space due to the kneeling forward position used by Muslims. A minimum of eight square feet would only accommodate worshippers that are small in stature, such as myself. Larger worshippers would need more space. At the last hearing, one of your commissioners pointed out that a mosque application from Staten Island had used 11 square feet in their floor plans. This number is realistically more adequate in determining occupancy. Muslims are required to use the prone position when praying, and to say that they will all stand ignores the tenants and doctrine of the religion. At eight square feet, only 131 people would be permitted on the floor designed for 210. Even the calculation of 210 men on the first floor is too small because their membership lists 226 men. That's 16 more men can fit in that space. And they can't move them to the second floor because men and women are required to pray separately. It's obvious that space is already too small for their membership, plus there is zero room for any future growth. A much larger mosque is going to be built at 149th Street and Beach Avenue closer to where they live. They're looking for a builder right now. The single-family home there currently used as a worship center plus the demolished cleared lot next door make a combined lot of 100 by 100.67 square feet. A mosque as large as 10,000 feet could be built there.
Please wrap up, you have three minutes. You have three minutes.
In my conclusion, there are too many inherent problems with this site from the size to parking to how many folks could adequately pray there. And I say to you, if the space will not comply, you must deny.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Joe Almaroso and I'm the zoning chief of Casino Park Civic Association and also serve on the zoning committee for the Queen Civic Congress. At the two previous hearings, you have heard a great deal of testimony from both the applicant and the community. In order to make a fair decision, you will have to separate what testimony is the truth and what is not so truthful. Testimony from the community has been consistent with arguments based on the zoning resolution, facts, and sound reasoning. On the other hand, the applicant has changed their testimony to satisfy serious concerns of Community Board 7, the borough president, and now mostly important, this BSA panel. One of the most important facts that must be considered in making your decision is determining the truth about occupancy. In my testimony at the first BSA hearing, I presented those sections of the law regarding occupancy and required floor area per person in a public assembly and the required prayer position for prayer by one of the Islam faith in accordance with the Holy Quran. I would like to re-present you with these facts proving five square feet per person for occupancy does not apply for a mosque. Now, in the last submission by the applicant, they say that they have building code compliance. That is a truthful lie. And the reason I say that is that although they have, I took from the building code the required floor space per person for a place of assembly and lists for concentrated areas where there are not fixed seats, a dance floor, ballroom, standing space, and for tables and chairs, each separately. They say nothing about religious institutions. Now, the smallest allowable floor area is five square feet for standing room only. Now, the applicant, although he says that the law requires five square feet per person as a minimum, he contradicts himself by saying although that the prayer activities at the mosque involve kneeling, meaning they need more than five. Now, I also brought some pictures of the positions from the Korans on the prayer. This is the first position where they have to bow, and if somebody's standing in front of them, they're going to either knock him over or he's going to bump his head. On the next one, it shows the second position which is not standing, if you noticed, and therefore, five square feet is inadequate and unreasonable. And this is important because if they cannot meet their programmatic needs by getting all of their congregation in the building, then these variances should be denied. Programmatic needs, the most important thing.
Thank you.
In my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I'll leave all of this with you.
Thank you.
Including the excerpts from the building code.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mary Hogan, past president, Casino Park Civic. I'm addressing the variance for complete exemption from the required parking spaces. Ours has become a very congested neighborhood. Deutschi Diagnostics and Flushing Hospital and Medical Center with its outpatient clinics are located two blocks from this site. In those two blocks are five medical offices, either in or on the site of what were one-family homes, all with staff and patients using on-street parking. On the two days that I leave for work at 7:10, cars are already parked on Parsons between 46th and Jasmine Avenues. On the days that I walk to church at 8:45, cars are already parked on Parsons to Calmia and down the hole of Jasmine and Calmia Avenues in both directions from Parsons Boulevard. At that hour, the doctor's offices are just getting started. By late morning, cars are parked to Oak Avenue on Sunday with four churches, two on 46th Avenue across from the site, one on Parsons Boulevard across from the site, and one at Laburnum and Parsons. There is no parking to be found anywhere in our neighborhood. The three congregations occupying enlarged one-family houses have space for several cars in the original driveways. Mary's Nativity, founded as a parish in 1926, acquired all the property necessary to meet its needs and satisfy zoning and building regulations. Although it has a parking lot and a schoolyard that can be used for parking, its congregation also needs on-street parking. Clearly, another house of worship with no off-street parking will completely overwhelm this neighborhood with its already existing parking burden. Thank you.
This is also the hospital, this is the corner, and all the way down here is Oak Avenue. So this is where all, and streets all through here where the parking is an extreme problem. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Kathy Kennedy and I'm a resident of the R2 zone in question and a member of the Casino Park Civic Association. Very recently, I drove through the entire R2 zone. There is not one oversized building in the entire R2 zone. You don't even have the McMansions that so many other areas have. We have small, single-family, basically, single-family detached houses. Page 11 of the environmental assessment statement says, "The immediate neighborhood surrounding the mosque contains numerous religious uses on practically all sides." Not quite true. It's two sides. The other two sides of the R2 zone, the first two sides where there are other religious institutions are not R2. You've got Mary's Nativity, you've got the Church of the Brethren, the Hindu Temple, you've got the Church of the Nazarene. None of the above structures are in an R2 zone. They were all built as of right prior to the inception of the zoning laws and we have no oversized structures in the R2 zone. Based on the above, I would ask that the BSA disregard any consideration of nearby houses of worship as justification for variances since none of these houses of worship are in the R2 zone, and that makes the claim of, "They did it so we can too," really specious. What is done in other zone areas should not affect what's done in an R2 zone, and the proposed mosque may be smaller than other nearby religious institutions outside the R2 zone, but the proposed mosque will be grossly larger than any other structure within the R2 zone. They speak in the statement of facts of the variances that have already been granted on this piece of property. For 50 years, Loma Realty had a commercial variance and it was a small operation, small realty with few clients, no parking issues. The dentist's office was turned down because of parking. The two-family house was never built. Despite the claim that in the statement of facts that prior BSA variances certainly show the subject property cannot be used for conforming use, in fact, the variances show that the property cannot be used for profit-making, commercial, or multiple dwelling use, but it's perfectly fine for a single-family house if someone pays fair market price, puts up a single-family house, and they can easily sell it to make a small profit. Within both the EAS and the SFF, the mosque is basically referred to as 30 feet, 33 feet, 35 feet, and 40 feet.
Please wrap up, you have three minutes.
Okay, and 45 feet. It will be 45 feet tall with the dome. We are concerned about cars stopping there as happens on the mosque on Geranium Avenue where they double and triple park, they block the emergency vehicles.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Catherine Hanvery Gross. I've been a long life resident of the area. I own a house on Calmia Avenue which is around the corner from the proposed spot. And all I have to say is, I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer. I am here as a resident of the area. If any of you could physically come and see the spot, you would know this is totally ridiculous. The other issue I would like to say is owning the house on Calmia Avenue, my son and family is living there. When I go to visit, thank the Lord, we have a parking in the driveway. There is no parking. Everyone from Flushing Hospital parks there all day, all night. That's all I have to say. I hope that you take it into consideration and make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Beverly McDermott. I'm president of the Casino Park Civic Association. No matter what your faith is, there are certain laws of science that are universally accepted. Day follows night, rain falls from the sky and blesses our crops. Gravity is an undeniable earth force. Birds fly without using fossil fuels. Fish swim, and a square peg does not fit into a round hole unless it's forced, thus irreversibly damaging the severe it has penetrated. And at the risk of being capricious, that's the point that we're trying to present to you today. The application for variances far exceeds the protocol for the public use of this property and insults the intelligence of those who vigorously oppose it. The KPCA has repeatedly presented in great detail why an oversized building on a lot that is totally unsuitable in size and location should not be approved. The issue of quality of life cannot be overstressed as the reality of diminished sunlight in gardens and the vision of a concrete wall resembling a prison rises up and blocks the view, parking issues have not been resolved and will be a horror for the residents who are already sharing every available space with employees and visitors at New York Hospital only three short blocks away, as well as the congregation of other houses of worship located directly in this location. The statistics supplied by the opposition are totally untrue. There is no founding for them. There are no available spaces. The applicants claim that the site is unsuitable for a residential building, which is blatantly untrue as there are many odd lots in Flushing that have been used to that end that have provided lovely homes for many residents. I would be delighted to take you on a tour of these homes. The applicants find it useful to change the size of the congregation to suit the mathematical equations used to define the worship space, but the numbers don't lie. They reveal the truth. The building does not meet the programmatic, physical needs of a growing congregation, and despite the protests offered, it is evident that an unwillingness to admit that our numbers are accurate in congregation growth is inevitable. The lame projections of how many worshippers will be on this site on any given day is based on a futile effort to diminish the actual use of the premises. Based on observations of other mosques in the area, one of them being about eight blocks away on Geranium Avenue, all of which have growing memberships that include religious instruction classes for children, one is hard put to seriously consider putting any such building on this site. The previous owner was well aware of these obstacles and sold it without any consideration to the buyer or to the residents in the immediate area. It would behoove the congregation to sell or develop the property as residential, which is in fact it is, and find a more suitable site.
Please wrap up.
Or existing building. I am.
Thank you.
For the mosque, as has been suggested at other meetings, and I strongly urge you to decline their request.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is James Campbell. I'm part of the Casino Civic Association. It's nice to see you all again. This is like my first time coming here and to every one of the meetings we've had about this mosque. They started out with a premise that it was going to be one thing. They've changed it a half dozen times. They have never improved the structure of this thing. They just keep telling us, "Oh yeah, we're going to do this, we're going to do this." First, they started out with 600 peckish members, then they went down to 400, then they went to another number, and that was a year and a half ago. They have not come up with an accurate list of how many people they have as of a year and a half ago. As you know, like any religious group, they will get new people coming in all the time. So I'm just saying, when they come and they take that we're going to do this will really help the community, it's not. It will destroy our community in so many ways, as they say with the parking, the housing, and it just, again, it just does not fit the area. I respect their religion, I respect everything they want to do, but it's not, shouldn't be there. If they come up and said, "We only have 100 members and we're going to make this and have the size," I would say, "That's fine." But the thing that they plan on putting there, if you ever drove through that area and looked at it, you would say, "You must be kidding me. This ain't here to get an A." And that's what I want to say. Thank you, and I really hope you can let it down. And my thing is, you've probably all heard, "Too big, uh, was it, too big to fail." This one is too small to succeed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Speaker, please.
With your permission, Madam Chair, I'd like to spread my remarks, single page, 14 font, space and a half, real quick. I know you're real busy, you do this all day long. Let me say thank you very much to you all for spending your time.
What's your name?
My name is Johnny Kelly. Four generations in Queens. I live down the block. I'm on the board of directors and the zoning committee for the Casino Park Civic Association, and I just have a very brief comment to make. As it says here, when I first spoke here, I said that they got snookered. They got a building idea on a site that was too small, they did not do their due diligence. I feel sorry for them. I read the Koran, I have a lot of Muslim friends. This is not about religion, this is about a building size. What I want to talk to you about is here we are right here, and we've all heard, you know, we have other locations here. This is a one-family zone by their own submission. They might have a parking spot here, two over here, three over here. I've seen their paperwork. It's scattered all over. And what we say here is very true. The bottom line is, this is a very active bus route, multiple buses coming down. This is a multiple bus route. There are bus stops right here. By their own admission, they're going to put hundreds of people in this location walking back and forth. And God bless them. We should all worship a God. My point is this, there will be women and children crossing this intersection. We already have problems. Do you want to be responsible for children and old ladies getting hit crossing the street? The law of unintended consequences. You make a decision here and down the road, as this mosque grows, there are going to be more and more people here. As typical to many mosques, they come in to pray for a little while, they park on the streets, and if you've ever driven past the mosque, they completely disregard parking. They got to get in for their 10 minutes and they get out. I do not agree that one group of people should have an effect on another group of people. This is America. You have the freedom to and the freedom from. They have the right to have their religious institution. We have the right not to be burdened with unsafe conditions. And to me, ladies and gentlemen, this is all about safety. This is about killing little children, sending them to the hospital, and old ladies, because you're going to put hundreds of people on a corner that already has a problem. This is a residential neighborhood. These are all homes. We have a hard enough problem parking on our home because nowadays a one-family home has got four families in it. To park in front of my house is a chore. You know, 10 years ago, it wasn't a problem. So now what you're doing is you're adding all these people into this community. They got snookered, and I say this, they're trying to snooker you. They're not going to snooker me. I'm a four-generation New York City boy, well-educated, taught in college. I look at the facts, and the facts to me do not substantiate the variances that they're requesting. I wish them well. This is New York.
Finish up.
Sell the property, build a house, make a little bit of money, and go someplace else. Thank you very much. God bless you and God bless America.
Are there any other speakers?
Okay, just before, I just wanted to, for the benefit of the community and to understand what it is that the board had to look at and to respond to a lot of the comments that were made, I want to say, first of all, that several board members, if not four, actually visited the site, well, four, visited the site, so are familiar with the neighborhood and look around, and their site visits are always very comprehensive. They really do want to understand what is the proposal will do to the neighborhood and so on. The site is a triangle. It's what we call in the business a poster child for a variance. It's such a poster child that it's been the subject of two variances, one of which was needed to build a house, which was never built. The reason for that is that the front and side yard regulations force the building to be a tiny triangle that wouldn't be practical for a home. So anybody who would want to improve this property needs a variance. So then, so a house of worship is an allowable use on this site, so R2 district or not, a house of worship is an allowable use. The only waivers that are being requested relate to bulk, right? They're requesting a slightly more than one F.A.R. of floor area which- They're requesting a slightly more than one FAR floor area, which, under city planning, would be something that could be approved by special permit, and they're also requesting waivers of the front yard regulations. What I understand is, originally, before they came to us, actually, the proposal actually went all the way to the street line, and in the design revisions, they pulled it back from the street line so that, actually, there's a much more generous, effectively sidewalk. And one of the reasons that I understand that they don't want to landscape that area is to allow it to function as a wider sidewalk. In response to our concerns about a house of worship next to residences, we have a lot of experience with this, where there are small sites with houses of worship. We asked them specifically to put up fencing between the adjacent homes and their property, and then also high, dense shrubs. The whole idea of that would be to buffer any sound that might come from people who are outside there and to make it less evident that there is perhaps people who are, say, congregating there. With respect to the parking, I know that parking impression, the availability of space and parking, has to do with, when you personally have gone out looking for a space, but what we actually ask for is empirical studies, where we have specialists who are parking engineers, and the engineers go out, the applicant hires an engineer, but in this case, it's an engineer well-known to the board, who goes out and actually counts the amount of parking spaces that exist on the block, and then counts at the times when, in this case, the mosque would be the busiest, and looks to see how many spaces there are during those busy times. And during those busy times, which are not the same times as people, say, go to church or whatever, there are actually, were shown to be a lot of spaces available during the peak times, when you might actually get 21 people looking for a space, or actually far more than 21 spaces available. So the empirical evidence indicates to us that a parking waiver is appropriate, and under the city planning special permit process, there is a waiver available for houses of worship, all houses of worship, if it can be established that the congregation lives within three-quarters of a mile of the house of worship. Then there's an analysis done of how many, what percentage of those people will drive, and then that determines the extent of the waiver. In this case, the director, the imam for the mosque, has indicated to us that the vast majority, in fact, 100% of the people who live within the three-quarters of a mile, and actually, there's more like a half a mile, will walk to the site. We don't have the authority to look behind the worshiping protocols of any religion. That's the religion that determines how they operate, and so we take at face value their statement. With respect to the square footage per person that's being allocated, for one, the building code instructs that five square feet per person is the number that's used and it's required, but in addition to that, we ask that question directly of the architect, who has experience designing other mosques, and that architect told us that five square feet is what he uses when he designs these mosques, and the reason has to do with shoulder-to-shoulder regulations, and I won't go into details because I'm not an expert. Then, let's see, with respect to the size of the building, it's actually quite a modest building, because it's a very tiny site, and it's directly across the street, which is neighborhood context. That's what we look at. We look at, is the size of the building consistent with neighborhood character? The building is diagonally across the street from other houses of worship that are of similar, if not larger, size. So that's what we've looked at. And so, I don't know if you wanted to add anything, or perhaps if your client wants to add anything, but I just wanted to clear up how we have reviewed this application. Did I do anything else? Okay. So, if you don't have anything to add?
No, I don't have anything to add.
So, on that note, I'm gonna close the hearing, and just for the public's information, we're gonna, we closed today. That means we're finished with deliberation from the public, I mean, getting more information from the public, from the applicant, and so on, and then we have, we schedule a vote, which we're going to schedule for a few weeks from now, and there's no public testimony at the vote, though you're welcome to attend, to hear it. You can also watch it on our videos. Okay? So, yeah.
The record's been kept open for Senator Velma's submission, so just to make clear that that submission is due...
Yeah, so that submission would be due next week. Yeah, so next week would be, sorry, by the 28th of July, right? Okay. So, and, yeah.
Do I have a chance to respond, or is that just it?
We believe the record is complete.
Yeah, we think the record is complete, but, yeah. So, on that note, I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair Prunam Lohner?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner LeGrand?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
And to set a hearing date for August 2nd, I mean, a decision date for August 2nd.
I can't attend, but I have to be at the FDNY hearing all day that day.
I think it's fine.
Yeah, that's all right.
Yeah. If the matter needs to be reopened, I guess we'll advise.
I'll be at the review session on Monday.
Yeah. Okay.
If the matter needs to be reopened, I'll let you know.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. You gone?
Yes.
Does anybody need a break? If you have a question, please, if you have a question, please direct it to, yeah, counsel. Yeah. Okay. We're gonna take a 15-minute break. Is that too much? No?
Take a 15-minute break.